Thursday, 19, 2016 for our proposed budget review. We've had Mr. Lyons will turn it over. We'll start him.
Okay, thank you, members of Mayor's -- members of City Council. Welcome to your fiscal '17 budget overview. As is the tradition, I usually like to have a little bit of fun as we kick off a budget. You've heard us talk that Mr. Crumley and I actually enjoy budgets. So to that end, this year's budget is built for growth. It is no secret that our community is growing. And so as you'll see in the budget presented before you, we've added personnel and resources to accommodate that growth so we can continue to serve the community. I always look for a budget theme, and so I found a quote, "Growth is never by chance. It is a result of forces working together." James Cash Penny. If you don't recognize that name, that would be J.C. Penny. So keeping with the theme of having fun with budget, I asked the departments to bring me a character from a TV or movie who would make an ideal employee for their department. Oops, let me get PowerPoint coming here. That's good. See if we can get -- there we go. So we're looking for an ideal new employee from a TV or movie. The first department was Recreation. They proposed the professor from Gilligan's Island, said he was always trying to help someone and serve the people he worked with. Not quite sure why Darren Gore picked Red Reddington from Blacklist, but that was his ideal employee. We have competition for the next employee, both IT and Human Resources wanted Iron Man. And as you all have probably figured out by now, the city manager's office, you never know what's going to happen, and you have to use the resources available to deal with the situation at hand. So my ideal employee was none other than MacGyver. And really, this year, there was one department that really stood out from the others in terms of what they identified. So we're going to take two minutes now to take a look at what the Fire and Rescue Department put together for us. Let's go to the videotape.
Have you heard Murfreesboro's hiring firefighters?
Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Why would Murfreesboro want to hire us?
Well, I mean, look at all the years of experience we've got. We're advanced EMTs. We've got several rescues under our belt.
You'll be all right. The fireman will take care of it.
Open the door, get out.
Yeah, we're certified high-angle rescue techs, confined-space techs.
No, no, leave this arm alone. Leave this arm alone. Straight out of the water. Watch his legs. Now, don't shove, don't shove. Get that basket out of there, will you? Put the strokes over into the other side of the boat, too.
We've got all the stuff and extrication, but why would we want to leave LA County?
Well, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, that's a growing city. They've got new stations going up. They've got more stations planned for the future years.
Yeah.
Training facility.
They also have the largest university in the state, and the economy's booming now. And I heard they've got a new chief, and they're just growing, adding new stations and new trucks and everything.
Well, let's go for it.
Let's apply.
All right, we'll do it today.
Just so you'll realize how old I am, Rick Lance leaned over and asked me, he said, "What TV show is this?"
When I was a kid, I had an emergency lunchbox. There you go. Certainly credit goes to the folks in City TV when they filmed that. They brought the fire truck out back, and Farm Marshal Carl Pease was actually shaking the truck to make it look like they were driving. So like I said, budget can be fun. So City Council's first goal is safe and liberal neighborhoods. So a couple of quick highlights on PowerPoint. A couple of quick highlights on the safe and liberal neighborhood goal. We'll open Fire Station Number 10 on Veterans Parkway. We've held off on that for a number of budgets, but now the call value is such that that station is required. We'll be constructing a new police headquarters and public safety training facility. A big upgrade in services, basic life support by the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department, beginning the Greenway Extension of Barfield Crescent Park, the studies that we've got on the bottoms and Highland Avenue. And we are, as you all know, working on citywide design guidelines. Our next goal is strong in financial and economic health. This is our 18th year without a property tax increase. This year, the city's bond rating was increased to AA1. We're just one step away from the top rating that you can have. That shows strong financial management and leadership from our city council. We've got a number of road projects, Lidle Street, St. Clair, Middle Tennessee Boulevard and Jones Boulevard, the redevelopment of the former First Methodist Church and Franklin Synergy Site. And then our sports tourism continues to be very robust, and this is our first full year of the Adams Tennis Center. Third goal is excellent services. This year, we'll be selecting land development management software for the development community that does business with the city. We feel like this will be a better way for us to serve those customers and our residents. We'll continue our service excellence and focus on customer service training. City TV will be converted to high-definition. That will be done through a Comcast grant. You'll see that in the communications budget. We'll be repaving $2 million worth of city streets, developing a shop and restroom for the Bloomfield Links Golf Course. And curbside recycling is something else that we're going to begin planning this year. We'll continue to engage our community through an online community discussion board. Many of you all saw the media attention that we had with the chalkboard that was put up on the Franklin Synergy Site. Certainly credit to Jennifer Moody and her creativity. That was extremely well received. We'll use social media to talk about what's going on with the city and continue to hold neighborhood meetings on crucial issues. This year, our general fund totals $144 million. You can see that back in 2006, it was $79 million. Now, part of this change is explainable because there are a number of funds that had been budgeted separately, like Parks and Recreation, which is a large fund, which is now encompassed in the general fund. Our revenue comes from now primarily local sales tax. The property tax had been the leading revenue source for the city until about two or three years ago. Subsequent to that, the sales taxes passed. Our property taxes this year are estimated to be $38.3 million. Back in 2011, this was $35 million. The growth of the community has certainly helped us avoid tax increases and see the growth that we've all enjoyed. Sales taxes this year will be projected at $42 million. You can see a strong trend line there of it moving up. While we typically budgeted for fund balance, and this year's budget does include a fund balance appropriation, it's not been touched in seven of the past 10 years. One of those years was the acquisition of the Commerce Center Site. This year, we're projecting to touch fund balance a little bit, but we bought the Franklin Synergy Project for $1.5 million. Two revenue changes in this year's budget. The solid waste fee, which would be proposed at $5 per month per can. As we know, Middle Point Landfill is nearing its full and active life. We need to begin the process to develop a funding stream for that. And as part of that solid waste fee, the city looks to begin a curbside recycling program. And there's also a proposal to increase the hotel motel tax. As I mentioned, the largest expenditures for the city are Police Department at just under $28 million, the Fire and Rescue Department at 18, and Rescue at, I mean, Recreation at $13.8 million. Our debt service did increase this year. We did have a quite a large bond offering, but the city continues to still only use about half of its debt capacity. As you look in the budget, you'll see a number of our fuel line items are down due to savings in fuel. And one of the biggest changes for us behind the scenes this year was the beginning of our budgeting in our Munis software program. Many thanks to Aaron Tucker and Anna, who worked through the new conversion. It was a new way for us to budget. That is one of the reasons you don't see some of the same number of years of prior-year history. Certainly, that will get built over time. Then the other change that was significant this year, we changed our chart of accounts. Some of our line items you'll see moving up and down, although the money may not necessarily change. So we'll work with you on any questions that you might have. Most of our budget is actually for, oops, switch screens here. Most of our budget, about half of it, is for personnel costs. Quick reminder on the budget calendar. We've got a review session today, a review session next Wednesday, June 2nd if necessary, and then there'll be a budget public hearing on June 2nd for the public to comment on it. And this graph is a little bit difficult to see. I apologize. I'll send it to you. But what I tried to show here was the salary changes in Tennessee cities over the last five and six years. And what it shows is that Murfreesboro and Brentwood have led the state in the last six years at 20% pay increases over that timeframe. This year's budget does include a 2% pay increase. So Mayor, I'll be glad to answer any questions globally, but I know we're going to be doing a deeper diving into the individual departments. So that would complete my overview.
Any questions for Rob? I'm going to ask, if you don't mind, and thanks to everyone who's out in the audience, we have a department head who has a state soccer important engagement, whose son is playing in a state soccer match. So I'm going to ask if we can move Fire up to first on the list, if you don't mind, Mr. Lyons.
I'd be happy.
Chief Foltz.
He's ready. As he's coming forward, there were a number of significant things that you'll hear in just a second that earned the Fire and Rescue Department's, its first cover on the budget document this year. We were really proud of some of the things that Chief Foltz has brought to us, so they are certainly featured on our cover. Appropriate for them to go first.
Yeah, I want to, Mayor, members of council, I want to thank you. Mr. Lyons, thank you for the budget cover. Our department appreciates that. We do have a lot of things going on this year, including in our goals that you will see. And well, I'll start with the projects, the capital projects that we've initiated within this budget year that will continue on into the next budget year, spending capital money, capital improvement plan money that has been left over from savings of other projects in years past, 2010, 2012, capital improvement plans. Some of those projects are listed out in the narrative, replacing bailout systems, install equipment to facilitate video conferencing. The video conferencing is going to greatly help reduce our fuel cost, keep our units in the stations in their main response area, doing training by doing that by video conferencing. We have purchased that. We're waiting on that equipment to come in at this time. The purchase orders have already been issued on all of that. We're replacing our current phone system. You all approved this a few months ago or a couple of months ago with a voice-over internet going with the city's phone system that will result in about a $10,000 monthly savings. And that's one of the ways that we reduced our annual budget for phones this year was through that, through that system. We're upgrading to automated dispatch and some of those things, but we're also going to be installing backup generators at our fire stations. The eight fire stations that currently do not have backup generators will have generators installed. We're working with Griggs and Malone to get that accomplished, and they're going to be making site visits actually tomorrow to get that facilitated going in. The goals for this year are to open Fire Station 10. We are projecting to be able to open that station July the 31st with your approval in the budget. And some of the numbers that kind of stood out to us as we reviewed that, the opening of that station was over the last three years, 2013, 2014, 2015, the city issued over 2,300 certificates of occupancy in that area where Station 10 is and in the Blackman area where it would be responding into. And so that's a significant increase in development in that area. And anybody that's been out there has seen the amount of development that's going on in that district. And we felt like it was a vast need to staff that station. Calculating the run volume that that station, the engine that we would locate at that station, we're estimating approximately 590 calls this coming year is what we would answer out of that station. That's up from some of the projections that you've seen for two reasons. One reason is in the past, we had not figured where that station would respond into other districts on fire calls. And so the 280-volume numbers that you had seen did not include some of that. And the other reason is we've increased the amount of apparatus that we're sending to structure fires due to ISO stipulations and effective safety at our fire scenes, as well as having operational capabilities that are much better by having that extra added company on those responses. So that would be around where we're at with Station 10, the numbers and the volume that would be going with that station. Does anybody have any questions about Station 10? And I'll move on. The basic life support procedures through our EMS response by October the 1st, and I know that you all approved basic life support a couple of years ago, that our trucks responded to that. We have limited basic life support capabilities currently. What we're looking to do is expand the amount of medications that our EMTs can administer by October 1st. This is going to be in conjunction with Rutherford County EMS and speaking with them about expanding the scope of what our EMTs are allowed to do. Currently, our EMTs and paramedics are not allowed to perform up to their standard of care or their licensure. We've got a limited amount of medications that they can deliver. This will expand what medications they can deliver and greatly enhance our emergency response to those medical calls. We are looking to also go, we have 12 paramedics. We actually have 15 in the department. 12 of those paramedics work on shift. We can staff four of our busiest stations with paramedics. We anticipate being able to do that by July the 1st of next year. Paramedic response would include enhanced medications, the ability for personnel to innovate, those paramedics to innovate patients that need airway procedures done on them and things like that, and functioning at the level of their paramedic license is what we would be able to do. This is going to, again, greatly enhance what we can do. If we staff four stations with the current paramedics that we have and allow them to provide up to that level, that would encompass about 65% of our medical calls that would have a paramedic responding to them within that four-minute timeframe of our response. And so we think it'll greatly enhance our response to medical calls. Again, we're meeting this next week, Rutherford County EMS, but we anticipate being able to get this accomplished training-wise, getting the medications ordered and the things that we need to have in place by October 1st for the advanced EMTs and by July the 1st of next year for our paramedics. Does anybody have any questions about the upgraded emergency medical service items?
I know that the men and women of the department are going to be excited about that.
Yes, they're very anxious to be able to perform at their level of licensure, and they've wanted to do that for a very long time, and there's truthfully no reason that we shouldn't allow them to perform at that level. They're very skilled. They're very good at what they do. And just providing them the medications and the means to do so is what we're looking to do this budget year. With some of that, we are also going to partner with Motlo State Community College, and it's in the budget to add an EMT class to where we have more of our personnel trained. Currently, 83 of our personnel are trained at emergency medical responder level, which is a certified level. We're looking to get all those personnel over the next few years to advanced EMT level that want to become advanced EMTs. We anticipate probably over the next three to four years, being able to train 55 to 60 of our current staff up to that level. We have also placed it in our job descriptions that it is now a requirement for our personnel to attain advanced EMT within three years of the date of employment for firefighters and four years of the date of employment for fire trainees. And so we will provide those provisions for class and licensure at those levels and be providing a much better support for that. Again, part of that also is to do a, have provisions in place to have a medical director of our own, should that become necessary, to have our own medical director to allow our personnel to provide that level of skill. One of the initiatives, it's not really a budget item, but it's something that's very important to us. We've actually increased the amount of budget that's in that line item, but prevention is huge to us. We want to make sure that we prevent emergencies before they're even happening. And so we are requesting your permission kind of through the budget to rename the Fire Prevention Division to the Community Risk Reduction Division to better encompass what our Fire Department does totally in a broad scheme of community risk reduction, which includes child safety STEM installation, going to schools and teaching about pedestrian safety, swimming safety, other things like that, programs that we're going to get initiated within the schools. We're going to partner with the city school system and Dr. Gilbert into some of their STEM curriculum and develop a curriculum that will go in and teach kids about science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and how we use those things in the fire service, and at the same time, teach fire prevention and safety techniques to the children through that curriculum. So we're excited about that and look forward to naming that division, the Community Risk Reduction Division. We also have the public training, public safety training facility underway, or hopefully property acquisition happening soon with that, partnering with the Police Department on that facility that's already in our capital improvement budget. Prepare specifications for the 100-foot aerial that will go to the new Station 4, which is also in here to be located on Medical Center Parkway. We continue to move forward with that. Construction Manager at Risk is going there. We're going to grow and expand our public education programs, as I mentioned, and we're looking to increase our use of technology to streamline everything within the department, both in patient care reporting, fire reporting, as well as the video conferencing are things that we're looking to do. That's our goals for this coming year. Are there any particular areas of the budget that I can answer questions with or the goals that we have or other areas that are in there?
Mr. Washington.
How you doing, Chief?
I'm doing great, sir.
Looking at the new positions and promotions for FY '17, explain to the public the position of fire trainees. You've got four of them approved in this budget.
Yes, sir. And the four that approved, actually, we'll be adding a total of 15 positions. The positions that will be added will have a captain, a driver, and three firefighters on each shift at Station 10 that will go assign there. The numbers that you're seeing will also include the captains and drivers' positions. But the total that we will hire of trainees and firefighters are 15 for that station, and then the other promotional steps will happen at captain and firefighter. The trainee position can come to us with no fire training whatsoever. They can have a high school diploma, valid driver's license, and they apply for us. We're currently just finishing up a recruitment process for both firefighter and fire trainee. The firefighters have to come to us certified with firefighter one and a minimum of emergency medical responder. We hire those, but we're also hiring the trainees. The biggest reason that we look to hire trainees is we have a lot of issues finding minority inclusion at the firefighter, at the certified firefighter level that want to leave the departments that they're currently employed with. And this is our opportunity to have some minority inclusion, provide them the training through the State Fire Academy, and be able to make sure that we can hire those qualified personnel.
I want to thank you, Mr. Lyons and the mayor, for doing that with the trainees because there's been a little issue with me with hiring people off the street. When you have firefighter one, you're already certified, but a trainee can walk off the street if they want to be a firefighter. And everybody don't want to be no firefighter.
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't be one. So, you know, so I know, especially with linemen and firefighters and police officers. So I do appreciate the city administration providing the opportunity for those positions to be field.
Thank you, sir.
You did a great job explaining that, too.
Thank you. And we're also very heavily recruiting veterans as part of our contract with the VA Hospital. We are very heavily recruiting veterans, and our recruitment process is very robust. We had 384 applicants for fire trainee, 123 applicants for firefighter. We did a physical abilities or a physical fitness assessment this past Saturday, and out of the 384, we had 182 show up to do the physical fitness assessment. We know that those personnel are qualified now. They will take a written test, and then we'll identify who that we will hire trainee-wise off of that. So it's a very robust process of identifying those candidates, and we're definitely looking for the right people to work here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions I can answer? Mayor, thank you for allowing me to go first to watch my son. Blackman is playing Oakland in the regional finals tonight, so it's a pleasure to get to go see him play against Oakland, and so thank you.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so we'll now move to general fund review.
Mayor, I covered that with my presentation, so we'd be ready to move on next.
We'll move to outside agencies. And what we've done in the past, if the council's okay, we'll go through the list and read sort of what was budgeted and what was last year, what's budgeted this year. And then if there's any questions, we can go from there. Or actually, I think what we did last year, Ms. Wright, correct me if I'm wrong, is just take a second to read over the list, and if there's anything that you have questions or you want to ask about, then...
And there's one of these slated in places for...
And we'll say, want to make sure and let, you know, we've got the majority of the groups that are in this community who do a lot of the heavy lifting are out in the audience tonight. There's so many things that you do that we can't do, and I want you to know how much we appreciate your partnership with the city because without your work, the city, there's no way we could be near as successful as this community is. And so when we look at the dollars that the city is able to invest in your organization, we know a small token of what you get, but we want to say thank you and hope that you continue to do the work that you do. Councilmembers, you have anything that you want to discuss? Ms. Wright, and if we have a new applicant, will you refresh how that process works with a new applicant?
In your supplemental notebook, if it's a new applicant, the entire application is included in your notebook. Otherwise, it's just the summary sheet of the application, but no other attachments. And on your, what we call the cheat sheet, you can see the history of who's received funding, the amount we've already included in the budget, as well as the requested amount that was with their application. I think that is helpful as you go through, just in summary form.
Any questions?
I guess I'll just ask the question. I see the CVB number on here. It's, it looks like it doubles. I assume that's the hotel motel tax increase?
Yes, by formula, the 30% is directed to the CVB by formula. So if the tax rate is increased, that would also increase the CVB's funding.
If I have a question about the hotel motel tax, do I bring it up now, or is that a, do we have an opportunity to talk about that later, or is this, I mean, what?
I think either way, we could either talk about it now, or the other alternative would be make your way all the way through the budget, and we could pick that one up at the end.
Hey, Rick, if you'll pull your microphone down. There you go.
Is that better?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Murfreesboro. Test, test. Okay. Okay, any other questions on outside agencies?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, excuse me.
Ma'am, excuse me. I would also like to echo and thank the agencies for all you do. Studies have shown that, it has suggested that money allocated to agencies, outside agencies in any city is very much worth it. Our city benefits from the services that you provide, and really, it keeps us as a city from having to fund these operations ourselves. And if the city takes over services, we'll probably end up with a tremendous payroll. I have been on some of the committees that are on our list, and it takes a lot of expertise and talent to do this, and I've noticed on the boards that I have served on, the majority are volunteers. So, that speaks volumes for our city. And as a council, I want us to always look at these services and value what the people do, and I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you so much. Our city is a much better city for the services that you provide, and here again, you're saving millions of dollars, because if you did not provide these services, and if we did not allocate money for you, then it would be on the city to do this. But more than anything, I think a lot of times, we put a lot of emphasis on, in our families, on our jobs, and everything, on the dollar amount, but the service that you all provide to the citizens of our city is priceless, and I want to just say thank you so much.
Okay. Now, we will have, at the end of our budget review, if there's any additions or deletions to the list, we'll have that opportunity to do that at the end as we go through. So, thank you, everyone, for coming. You're welcome to stay, or I can give a couple of minutes, and we can let the room have a mass exodus if you guys want to do that as well. So, we're going to talk about some exciting stuff if y'all really want to stay. I know Mr. Latour will stay with the chamber.
You can hear everything. But she can hear everything. It doesn't have to be right here, Jim.
The last one I watched is home.
You can hear me breathing.
Stephanie.
When you don't talk in the microphone, they can't hear you, and she can't hear you on the audio that they gave her a minute's. So, you don't, you don't show up. They can hear you.
TV, you can hear it.
It depends.
When he and I sit here and talk, we can hear each other.
But sometimes, people do hate that, and that's what they do.
Yeah. All right. That's a good reason.
It depends. So, if you talk, that's what it's for.
We need a lock.
But then, then you forget to turn it back on. That's a conference call.
You want to wave at the camera right there?
Yeah.
How are you doing to get moved up there for the chemistry?
Okay. All right. Okay. We do have, you know, I think really what we're going to do tonight is, this is just going to be a guide of an agenda, and I think I'm really just going to pick different departments out. We're just going to do them in whatever order. Is that okay with you guys?
Evergreen needs to be next.
Do what?
Evergreen needs to be next.
Well, we, okay.
She has to be home by five.
Okay. So, we're going to do Evergreen Cemetery, and then we're going to do the City School Board, because there's a conflict, the City School budget as well. So, we'll go through Evergreen. If you'd like to, we have that Evergreen agenda handy. Is there anyone here for Evergreen?
She's back here.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Are you going to present that, Melissa, or...
Usually, it's just if y'all have any questions.
It's in your supplemental notebook.
Mm-hmm. It's the first tab.
Yeah, the first tab on our supplemental. Any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now move to, excuse me, we'll now move to the City School. Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you very much, and thank you for letting us go next. I don't know what it says for us to go after Evergreen, you know. I guess learning continues from before birth or after death. I don't know. Thank you so much. I'd like to acknowledge that we do have two school board members here with us tonight, Jared Baird and also Nancy Rannier. And I do want to take time to thank the nonprofits and to also thank the other departments. We have tremendous partnerships with all the departments and almost every nonprofit that you have listed, and so, I'm very grateful to them, because we could not do what we do if it were not for their partnerships. This year, you have a notebook, and you have a cover letter from me. You also have a PowerPoint, so don't worry, I'm not going through the PowerPoint. But I do want to let you know that this budget really builds on last year's budget. It has to do with excellence in people, and excellence in programs, and excellence in facilities, so that we can continue the growth that we are seeing, both academically and personally for our children, and also the growth that Mr. Lyons has mentioned. Obviously, the city schools have grown very much the last two years, and we expect growth again next year. In fact, we've had about a 4.5% growth this year. We're projecting 3.6% next year, and I think that Mr. Anderson may miss it. I'm hearing from principals that what they're seeing as far as applications are increasing this year. So, we have seen a growth in students. You actually have two separate main parts of the budget this year. You have the typical general purpose budget that we are presenting to you, and then you have a separate budget, which is a capital outlay request that we are making. We are making that so that it does not become part of the general purpose budget, so that it does not become recurring funds, but it is to let you know that we do have several capital outlay requests that we're needing. Obviously, we want our schools to remain in the excellent shape that they currently are in, so we have some work to do there. So, you have a PowerPoint that does talk about the main points of the budget. Obviously, when you look on page two, you'll see the emphasis there that we have in the different content areas, and also to address growth. We are completing the Hobgood edition, and we are going to be beginning the Bradley. We have some restrooms that we're adding at Bradley, and then we will turn around, and as soon as we complete Hobgood, we will start on the Black Fox edition, and also are looking now, in partnership, of course, with city government, to purchase and bring a school online, a new school online by fall 2018. So, those are our big projects. We are also looking for a bus garage. You have there what we're doing as far as personnel. You have what we're requesting as far as facilities, and so, we are not asking for additional revenue on the general purpose part of the budget, but we are asking for a capital outlay request this year. And really, I want to spend the rest of the time with answering any questions that you have about the budget. When you look at the capital outlay request, which is on a tab called Capital Outlay, which makes it handy, the blue, the part that is highlighted in blue, we have to do this year. So, if you look at the capital outlay request under the Capital Outlay tab, you will notice two columns. One column will say included in the board budget, so that is what we will be taking into our general purpose budget. The other that is requested from the city, the blue that is highlighted there, for example, furniture for new classrooms, and then on the second page, you have quite a bit there. So, that would be the capital outlay request that we're asking of the council, would be $673,000. So, questions that you have. Mr. Anderson, you have all the answers.
Dr. Gilbert?
Yes.
On your capital outlay?
Yes.
I noticed that you didn't, you listed all the schools but Scales Elementary. Is there a reason?
We actually worked for about two months with principals, asking what they need. So, what you'll find in the budget itself is that she did not have major capital outlay requests, but she did have instructional requests. And so, our capital outlay is based on what, really what our principals are telling us. This is the beginning. We have several schools that have carpet that needs replacing with tile, and so, that is going to be a major initiative we have, starting this year and also continuing. But Ms. Johnson did not have major capital outlay requests, but she did have some instructional requests that we're meeting.
Okay. I've been doing a little research on modern technology in the schools, and nothing on maintenance or anything, and I see the requests. Could you entertain, I see where the newest school, which is...
Overall.
Overall. Thank you.
Right.
They're getting two of the newest educational technology boards. Could you move one of those boards to Scales Elementary?
Well, actually, well, first of all, Ms. Johnson didn't ask for that, but those are simply, when we built overall, we did not outfit every room, because we were not using every room. So, that request is for the classrooms that will be added to overall this year.
So, you're saying Scales already has them in every room?
No. I'm not saying that. Typically, what is happening with those is we will outfit a new school with the most current technology, and with some of our schools, for example, Black Fox has chosen not to add. They have the title money where they could add, but that's really up to the principal what they add as far as that. What we do feel is vital, we do feel that the laptops are vital, and so, that is the reason we came to you with those requests. But the additional technology that is not necessarily vital to every classroom, when we build a school, we will outfit it, and you may want to address what was put into Scales when it was built. But the reason that overall is getting that is to complete that school, because the additional classrooms that we'll be bringing onboard there.
So, they currently have them in every room at Overall Creek. Is that correct?
Not, no. Not in the rooms that aren't being used yet. These would be the additional rooms. Yes, they have them in the rooms where there are currently children.
Currently classrooms.
Right. But because we are adding classrooms there.
And these are additional classrooms that have been added, and these are to cover, so that all classrooms are the same.
Right. Right.
And I'm seeing, you said that items highlighted in blue are the must haves.
Right.
And I'm looking at the principals', all of their wish list items. The newest school, Overall Creek, these two Cuomo boards, $7,000 each, is under the must have category.
Right.
And I'm looking at the principal's wish list, and he did not request any technology. So, again, and this is a must have item according to your budget.
Right.
So, therefore, not adding or taking away from your budget, I'm still asking that you, since this is one of the most modern technology things, if you would move one of those boards to Scales, because the Overall Creek, he's on a must have on these two boards, and he didn't, on his wish list, he did not ask for it. So, can we not, I just find it hard to see a school, and these schools are run by taxpayers, to not have anything coming to them on the budget. And I'm just asking if you would move one of these, entertain moving one of the Cuomo boards to Scales, because on the wish list, Overall Creek did not ask for, and it's on the must list.
Right. The reason that Overall Creek didn't ask for it is because there was understanding with Overall when it was built, that when we had to add classrooms, we would outfit those classrooms with the technology. If you will look over, let me find Scales. If you will look over at Scales into the personnel portion, the staffing standards, what she had asked for at Scales, she had asked for the psychologist to remain there for three days. She had also asked for the half guidance counselor to remain there, and that, those were her two priorities that she wanted, and that's what we've done there. The fact that Overall is completing their classrooms with Cuomo boards has to do with, we did not put Cuomo boards in classrooms where there were not children, but we knew we would have to add them when we added classroom children in. You will have a lot of classrooms, we have a lot of classrooms that don't have the same thing. For example, Black Fox has not made it a priority to have interactive boards. Some of our other schools have, and so, that's the reason you have those two Cuomo boards that are must haves.
Dr. Gilbert?
Yes.
How much, how much are the line items for these technology boards?
You want to answer?
About?
$7,000.
And I would not want to put that into, I would not want to put just a Cuomo board in a school.
Yeah, so...
I would want it to batch. Whatever she has there is what I would want. Do you want to, do you want to address that?
Yeah. What I was going to get at was the idea of, you know, the principal didn't ask for it at Scales, so there's probably a reason why she didn't ask for it. I think maybe what we, you know, if we're going to consider something, perhaps what we do is consider, you know, adding just a technology line item and let the principal do whatever she wants to do, not necessarily say, we're going to force you to have a Cuomo board or whatever these things are called, and you're, that she didn't, or he or she didn't ask for. I mean, I...
I think that, I think if you talk to her, she would prefer some things besides technology, and that's, and that's what happened here. And I would not...
And did we provide some of those things?
Pardon?
Did we, or is, are some of those things already provided for in this budget?
Do you know what they already have at Scales? I know they have.
Or are there no line items whatsoever for them? I'm having trouble finding, sorry.
Scales has additional people in their budget, additional personnel. The Cuomo boards is, was the newest technology. There's actually even newer technology coming out today. If we were doing, adding something, it would be a portable board, similar to a Cuomo board, rather than one that's going to be stuck on the wall in one single classroom. But what Scales had was projectors that worked, that the teachers could hook their laptops to and project onto the wall, onto the screen. So, it's just a different level of technology. Each time we build a school, as you know, technology is advancing so rapidly, we try to outfit that school so they're all the same, and they have all the same equipment in that particular school as we move on to the next one.
All right. So, did they get an increase in their budget, though? Scales?
With Scales?
Yeah, total?
She is keeping, and I did not bring that, but I know that she is keeping her psychologist and also her guidance counselor, and that's what she had asked. And then each school will be getting, she will be getting, instead of a half-time instructional coach, she'll be getting a full-time instructional coach, and so, I know those just right off the top of my head. But when you're, when you're looking, I've got to trust what...
Yeah.
I've got to trust what I'm told, and I also have to look at what priorities there are. So, if I don't have someone that's asking me for something, but I have, I know I have a school that hasn't had carpet replaced, and we need to replace it in tile, and it may be 25 years, then that's got to be my priority. And I think there's that understanding with the principals. But we do, we, the way the budget is developed is we meet with each principal at least for an hour. That's in addition to when I'm always talking to them, and we ask them about that. And then I go back after the budget is developed, and I talk to them. The PowerPoint that you all have seen with some additions, they have seen and we've talked through.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you.
Dr. Gilbert, could I get you to turn to page seven in your booklet?
Okay.
Would you please?
I can tell you're an instructional. I'm not going there.
I was going to get you out there to say, maybe we're going to ask him.
It says marriage license.
What is that?
Explain that, please, sir.
I want to hear this one.
Well, we have a wedding chapel over, no, it's part of the state funding formula that's included in the state revenue sources, that school systems get that piece of marriage licenses.
All right. Okay. Not an expense. It's a...
I looked at it. I thought it was an expense. First, I was like...
I thought somebody was performing.
Going through the sixth grade.
And getting paid when we're putting it in the budget.
When you look at some of the places where we get money from the state, I don't know what that says, but there could be a song written about it.
What is the window on the new school doing?
Well, there's my window, and there's Mr. Anderson's window.
I understand.
My window is two years. His window's a little short.
We're looking forward to open up in, for the school year of 2018, 19. So, as far as the windows, how much time do we need? We really need about 18 months from the time everybody says, yes, let's go, and we get all the contracts and stuff in line. They look for at least 12 to 14 months for construction. If we go much faster than that, then it has upcharges in the construction costs. So, we like, we'd like 18 months at least to get the thing started.
Is there anything in the, I couldn't find anything that...
We really need about 18 months from the time this, everybody says, yes, let's go, and we get all the contracts and stuff in line. They look for at least 12 to 14 months for construction. If we go much faster than that, then it has up charges in the construction costs. So we like, we'd like 18 months at least to get the thing started.
Is there anything in the, I couldn't find anything that.
No, that's in the five year capital plan for that. What's in this one is is stuff for when Black Fox opens up its addition, that's, that's in here for that.
Okay.
All right, Gary, go over what you, the assistance you would like to see the council assist the school system on the CIP.
All right, you're talking on the CIP as far as the different facilities we're asking for. Obviously, we've done, we've done the Hobgood addition, and then we have in CIP for the Bradley addition, that's not addition, for the renovation at Bradley. Then for the next summer, open up Black Fox 10 classrooms, and to open up a bus garage sometime between, before Black Fox or right around that time that it opens, because we've outgrown our facility for all the buses we have. And then for the year after that, we've asked for the new school to open up, and then the year after that, we've asked for technology, again, because our technology then will be between five and six years old.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your support.
Thank you.
Mr. Neer, Mr. Barrett, thank you. And I know Chairman Campbell had called me yesterday just to, he had an important date with a granddaughter that he was picking up, and said he did not want to miss that. So we told him that's what you, what you need to do. So thank you all so much for coming. Okay, we're now going to move to the purchasing department. You thought I was kidding, didn't you, Mr. Lyons?
No. You weren't kidding.
Purchasing department.
I'll, I'll present that. This is more or less a continuation budget for purchasing. We're hoping to move forward with decisions on purchasing director here in the very short term. We've certainly seen the benefits of centralizing our, our purchasing. There's certainly more work that can be done, however, but we are making progress. This was a good decision for us. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Page 70, if you're looking for the spreadsheet.
Any questions on purchasing? All right. Seeing now, we'll move to fleet services. This is the most I've seen staff, they're all like looking around going, who's neck? Fleet services, you're up, Jack.
Good evening, Mayor, council member. I was expecting to go after Joey, but I'll go before him. Just like to share a few highlights from, from this fiscal year. In January, our biggest news is NAPA Integrated Business Solutions opened a parts store at the fleet service department. So they've taken over all our parts inventory, as well as supplying all the parts used to maintain and repair city vehicles and equipment. In September, we purchased a 350,000 BTU waste oil heater. This heater serves two purposes, it, it not only heats our shop area, but it allows us to dispose of our waste oil at no cost. We're also asking to purchase a second heater for next year. Also saved a lot of money on our, our gas bill. April, we held our annual emissions testing. We tested 297 vehicles with only four failures. Also in April, the fire department, we tested eight aerials and 18 pumps, all of them passing inspection. And for next year, we're, we're asking for the replacement of some of our shop equipment that's getting old and outdated, and the addition of a heavy equipment mechanic. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I've got a question. Why is the big change there, I'm sorry if I, if I could have read that, why is the big change in the operating costs for next year? Am I looking at the right one? Yeah.
Let me mention, they used to be an internal service fund, and because most of the departments now are in the general fund, we moved fleet services into the general fund. So whereas before, they had a list of expenses, and those similar expenses were in the general fund, now that they're in the general fund, if you'll look at the top of the expenditure category under salaries, it says transfer in from other departments contra account, that is because we have to decrease their, their department expenditures for the amount that's in the other departments. So the police has expenditures for fleet service repairs, fire does, street does, but they can't be here too. So we have, have it there as a negative, which makes their overall expenditures drop. So we're not double counting within one fund.
Don't, we're really just trying to operate that at a, at a net neutral.
Exactly.
And each individual department is paying their fair share.
And we did that before, but when they were an internal service fund, they had revenue from the departments. And, and we charged them a surcharge to make the department basically be as much as zero as we could get it. But now that they're within the general fund, we can't show revenue from another department within the same fund. So that's the negative number, if you're on page 207.
Yeah, I was 206.
Okay, look at 207, you'll see the negative 2,439. That's what that is. That number is reported within the other departments as expenditures to actually run their department, because that's who, whose cars were repaired or trucks were repaired.
So how do we get, how do we get the, the 646 number on the operating, I mean, I guess I'm a little curious as to why we're 250,000 over for 16, our, our estimated versus budget, and then, and then we're backing it off 646,000?
But that's netting in that contra account at the top of that column.
Yeah, how do we get from 2.4 million to 600,000?
The contra account for this year's estimate should have been included here, and that was a mistake. We should have included that contra account estimate as well. So this year's estimate really is probably more in line with what next year's budget amount is, because it's, it looks to me like it's probably getting double counted here and in the other general fund departments. That net 505,000 you see for fiscal year 17?
Yeah.
That, we're recognizing that same amount of revenue from risk management, drug fund, water and sewer, and stormwater, because they actually will write a check to the general fund for their use of the fleet department. So they still net to zero overall.
Yeah, it just makes it kind of difficult for us to get a handle, I mean, I'm, or for me to get a handle, sorry, to, as far as what's really going on, you know, as, from a perspective of where we were last year, what happened this year, and what we're thinking is going to happen next year.
Right.
So, so I guess.
If you took the 646, 751, and added back that 2439055.
Yeah.
That would show, well, oh, and the labor.
It would be if you backed off the 1 million plus the 505, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Then it's going to show where it's more comparable to the fiscal year 16.
Yeah.
Estimate and the budget. It's just for accounting purposes, we can't count for the same expenses twice in the same fund.
Okay.
And this is the first year fleet has been in the general fund. We may try to fine tune how that gets displayed for the future as well.
So will we continue to have that transfer from the contra account? Will that be a continuing?
Yeah, it'll, it'll still have to zero out overall for general fund, so that they're not showing the expense for general fund and the other general fund department showing that expense.
They're still operating like an internal service fund, they're just now within the general fund. But their expenditures are really for the vehicles and other departments. So that's where the true expenses are recognized. But they have to operate, so we, we show the breakdown of how that, how that expense is broken down on the fleet side, who's actually making the repairs, doing the oil changes, you know, whatever they're having to do for these departments. So you can see how their money's being spent, because on the police department, it'll just say, operation and maintenance fleet services.
So on your repair and maintenance side, where it says sublet repair and maintenance, looks like we were significantly higher there on our actual, or what we estimate to be our actual, and then also for next year, we're ramping that up significantly more, right? I mean, that's kind of where.
That takes into account all the risk management claims, which we were pretty bad on this year.
Gotcha. All right.
So the sublet maintenance and repairs, if a car crashes and we have to, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. We, the fleet service pays the bill, and then risk, but it comes out of the risk management account somehow, I don't.
Risk management reimburses general fund after fleet services pay for the repair.
Okay. All right, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neer. All right, we'll go to Parks and Recreation Department.
Page 164.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. First, I want to thank the mayor and the city council and city administration for your support of the Parks and Recreation Department. It's phenomenal, and there is a lot of folks that benefit. Matter of fact, our department has over a million user visits each year to our parks, and we continue to work toward improving our services programs and facilities for the enjoyment of our residents. This last year, we had several notable accomplishments. We opened the Adams Tennis Center and hired our first tennis pro for the city. I know last year, when I was here, and we were proposing the budget, I made a statement that said, I hope we can get the facility revenue neutral within three years. And what we had done is projected basically about 50% revenue for this year for the Adams Tennis Center. And we had put in there 100 memberships as our goal. I'm proud to report that our current revenue coverage is 87, or excuse me, 86.78% of our current expenditure. So we're just 13% away from covering our expenditures. And we have a little over 300 memberships so far, and our concentration has been on the operations, the memberships, and has been on getting people into the facility. With the hiring of the pro, we're looking at player development now, which is the next revenue piece that will be very important to try to make that goal in the future. So we're pleased with the performance of the facility, we've had some great comments. EMTSU has been a great partner, and hiring Mr. John Chris, who has 13 years at the NCAA level, is working very well in coordination with EMTSU. The other thing that we did this year is we took over the operations and management of the Bradley Academy Historical Museum, and that is going well, I'm glad to report. We're, we're really getting a lot of rentals into that facility, we're getting a lot of folks coming in. We've just looked at hiring a coordinator that will run the facility, and we're going to be concentrating this next year on developing programs, the way that we can connect in with tourism, and the way that we can get our local community back engaged with the, with the museum. Also, we, we partnered with Project 14 to build the Miracle Field Complex. We just opened bids on that project. We hope we'll be bringing something to you within the next couple of weeks. I know we have a meeting in the morning with the prices to go over that project, and we're very excited about that. We also held the inaugural City of Murfreesboro New Year's Day 5K as a part of the Mayor McFarland Citywide Wellness Initiative. And we had, I think, over 600 folks come out and participate in that race. We were hoping that we would get a couple of hundred, but that was, that was really well received. And Mayor, we want to thank you for all your efforts in trying to make Murfreesboro a healthier community. We have more to come. Also, we hosted 68 tournaments with an economic impact of over $30 million. Our goal is to put heads in beds, and I know you're looking at hotel motel taxes, and we're glad to be a part of that initiative as well. We launched a ParkSmart Safety Program campaign in partnership with the Murfreesboro Police Department to really look at the safety of our folks as they come to our parks and their valuables in their cars. And Channel 3 has done a phenomenal job in putting some videos together and reminding our citizens about protecting their valuables and being safe as they come to our parks. The other thing we've done is we've really increased our program offerings. Matter of fact, our cultural arts has gone up 300% over the past year. Of course, we have engaged the city council in discussions for the future West Park, and I know that Mr. Lyons has been working on that, and hopefully we'll have something back to the city council real soon in a recommendation. The other thing that we're proud of is we've started a recycling program within our department, and that is going well. We're starting to take that on bigger steps as we go. We started with small initiatives, but we're filling up those big recycle dumpsters, and we're calling the county, and they're coming out and emptying them, so that's going really well as well. Next week marks the 10th Annual TSSAA Spring Fling at Murfreesboro. So be prepared, all the hotels and restaurants are going to be full next week, which we really like as far as sales tax is concerned. But the economic impact is that, is around 3.5 to 4 million dollars. For the FY '17 fiscal year, we plan to complete the construction of the Miracle Field, open that facility in the spring of 2017. Of course, we're going to build a soccer practice facility on the Jordan Farm. Our plans right now is to try to have that where we can practice on it in the fall of this year. We will start the construction, I think Mr. Lyons mentioned this, of Phase 4, which will connect the Greenway to Barfield Crescent Park. And in regards to the budget, one of the things that I always like to note for you is there is, in this budget, 2,580,700, which is a part of a federal grant, but we listed in the Parks and Recreation Department budget because Ms. Wright wants some way to track that money. So that's a pass through. If you really want a true reflection of the Parks and Recreation budget, you would take that amount with the bottom line and subtract it, and that would give you what Parks and Recreation budget is. We're also working with the Corps of Engineers. They have started the North Murfreesboro Greenway. If you go to Central Valley Road, you can see where they're staged there. They're about halfway from that staging point now to Walter Hill. And that is going to be probably one of the prettiest stretches of our Greenway system in the entire city. So we think that construction will be complete sometime late fall of this year, and we'll bring you more information as that develops. Also, we're proposing in this year to develop a master plan for Parks and Recreation, which has been identified as one of the critical strategies in Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Master Plan, and that will give you more of a ground view of what is needed in Parks and Recreation for the future. We want to continue our partnership with the Murfreesboro City Schools in the growth and development of our joint use school parks. I know that in our CIP, we put in $500,000, and we're going to have a target site as a pilot project. And so Dr. Gilbert and I are talking about that, and which site that will be. We will continue, and it reflects. We will continue and it reflects in our budget to keep improving our programs, our facilities, maintaining our facilities and maintaining our services we offer to the city. And again, I want to thank the Mayor and Council and City Administration for your support and I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have about the Parks and Recreation budget.
You do a great job, Lanny.
Thank you and it's good to see you back.
Thanks.
Hey, Lanny.
Yes, sir.
Where are we in the budget for, for 2017? Is there, what's in here for the West Park? I mean, as far as, is there anything listed in here for West Park at all?
There is not. All of that is in our capital improvements program. The purchase of the land, we had planning money that we had put in a previous bond issue, but we have, we feel like Mr. Crumley and I discussed that, we think we have sufficient money to do what we need to do in terms of if we purchase land and develop it, the first thing we'll do is start engaging the community and finding out exactly what they want in developing that master plan. So we feel like we have the guns to do so.
That, that CIP money will all just be basically the capital outlay stuff. I mean, this is the, the employees that come along with it and all that stuff will ultimately transfer over into here maybe in '18 or something like that by the time everything's up and running, right?
Right.
And, and for the Jordan Farm, is there anything in here as far as employees or?
We have some increase in here for turf management.
Yeah, okay.
Our turf manager has looked at that, said what he needs to maintain that facility and we've included that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gibber.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to the Police Department.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure being here in front of you today, presenting the overall for the Police Department for the fiscal year 1617 budget. I wanted to go over some of the accomplishments that we had in '15, '16 and we broke them out by, by the City Council goals. First one, under Safe and Livable Neighborhoods, we categorized our radio system and currently we have three of the towers that are near completion and the fourth tower is expected to be completed under fiscal year prior to 6 of '17. And we expect those tower build outs all to be completed by the end of next fiscal year or this, this coming fiscal year. Under the Strong and Sustainable Financial Economic Health, we categorized traffic crash reduction, that we're finding ways to reduce traffic crashes because people that crash their vehicles, they can become injured, lose work from, lose time from work, they incur expenses with their vehicles and have insurance issues with that. So we, we looked at that as a way to improve the economic health of the city, so we're finding ways to try to reduce traffic crashes. One of those efforts that we've recently discussed here was the red light traffic program and we'll find other ways to improve that coming in the future years. Providing excellent services with the focus on customer service. Again, we've been working with Mr. Lyons and the, the new police headquarters that's forthcoming. I've been assured that it's going to be done by December of 2017 is the target mark, so hopefully we'll get that completed. And the other thing that we do, I think very well stepping in here, is that we provide excellent training to our officers and also to our leadership. We're trying to stay ahead with current trends, practices to keep our officers safe, well and able to do their job. The next item is engaging our community. We continue to strengthen our partnerships that we already have, such as the Citizens' Police Academy, Child Advocacy Center and the Community Anti-Drug Coalition. Moving forward, looking ahead, our department goals, we're looking to attain upon our accreditation through the Tennessee Law Enforcement Accreditation. We should be hearing about that. They came in and did a site visit last week and we, we anticipate that we'll be able to attain the accreditation. We'll know that will be coming June 1st. We're going to continue our efforts to reduce traffic crashes, as I discussed. The next thing that we're excited about is implementing field-based reporting. Field-based reporting is computerizing our cars and our electronic reporting so that we go paperless. Having paper, having the officers do paper reports, most of our officers can have the ability to type and they're very proficient at it. The other thing is that we're lacking is information from electronic reporting so that we can gain information from that and provide better data. Next thing that we're, we are also in the progress, process to look to start doing is scanning all of our paperwork using high, high speed scanning, scanning systems. Our goal is to get that accomplished by the end of fiscal year '17 so that none of these boxes have to be moved when we go to our new building because we are warehousing a lot of paperwork. We're working in joint with Fire Rescue on our public safety training facility. I got the privilege to tour that with Chief from the Fire Department and I'm excited about the facility. I think we have a great opportunity to improve all of our services with Fire Rescue and law enforcement. We're looking to reduce the amount of property that we're storing in our property room currently because right now we're, we're on an effort to sell our firearms in accordance with the state law that we've been housing and we're also looking for opportunities to purge other data. We're working the district attorney's, our city attorney's office that will get records on that, but we have a large amount of property. The goal is for every piece of property that comes in, we should be putting a piece of property out and expunging it. We're not currently at that rate. I don't know what rate we are if you ask me, but we need to reduce that property management. And the other thing that's not on there that I've added, that I believe strongly in, some of our goals should be, is to incorporate the six pillars of 21st century policing. This is, this came out of May of last year. The six pillars that guides law enforcement is to build trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education, wellness and safety. And the last item that we're also looking forward to is establishing a recruitment, recruiting team, so we can go out and recruit officers. And I always equate it as using a scalpel and going out there and recruiting those individuals that we need to bring in so that we can mirror the community that we serve. So that's a high level overview of our budget. I will, I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll use that as the perfect segue. I'm, I'm, you know, the, some of the things that I see are here, you know, when I talk to, to Mr. Lyons, is that we may not be being as successful as attracting qualified candidates to fill positions at the, at the lower level. Is there anything, I couldn't find anything in here that, you know, I mean, I'm not up for just throwing money at any problem, but, but, you know, whether it's we're not paying them enough or, you know, some other situation, is there anything in here? Or let me put it this way, I want to put something in here to address, if, if that's a problem, we need to address it. I mean, and, and we've got, you know, you weren't here when we did this MAG study and it's, you know, Glenn and Pam and everybody will have to get involved in this, but I mean, if we need to address that, it's, we need to hear that and we need to, the time needs to be now. We can't go with a shortage of officers. If we have vacancies that we can't fill, I mean, my personal opinion is we need to be addressing this and it needs to be a priority for us. I don't know, you know, I'm only one of us, but again, whether that needs, means we need to push the range up for those entry level officers or whether that means we need to hire more of them to take off, I, I can't say I know the perfect solution, obviously, but I want to see it addressed in the next three weeks. You know, I know we've got six coming in, you know, as far as the, what's budgeted here. You know, frankly, I'm not sure if that's enough for what I think, you know, our growth is coming on. We're talking about doing all this other stuff in the name of growth and increasing our police staff by a lot less than what we're increasing our growth by. So, you know, if it's six, you know, we need to be able to get the six and the other six that we can't get already. So I, I'm not laying that on you right yet, but I'm really laying it on you guys. We, we need to come up with a solution, you guys and him. I mean, I, my opinion would be in the next three weeks. If we really can't get, get them filled, we need to hear that and we need a solution, okay?
Okay. And just to give you a status, because I know we're getting ready to post our, our positions for officers. Currently, we have five vacancies. We have 18 officers that are in training, so the training time, by the time you get to academy, then the field training program says there's a lag time. And one of our, one of our discussions as command staff, we've talked about the retaining of employees, but also the opportunity of moving to a new building, it's, we're having discussions of how can we provide services maybe a little bit differently? For instance, I'm familiar with CSO programs. We're taking a look, a lieutenant's taking a look at Memphis to look at the community service program where we can use some civilians to do traffic enforcement, not traffic enforcement, but to do traffic accidents and assist on traffic scenes and maybe pick up bikes and other property. So we're trying to take a look and really analyze what are those additional services that we can provide, what civilians can we do? And, and I'm getting, I'm talking to every employee right now for 15 minutes and trying to find out, you know, exactly what their feelings are. And so I'll have a better path of, of retainment, but right now we have five vacancies and we're looking to also not recruit, but to retain our current employees because we're, we're putting valuable assets behind our people, putting them through academy and we don't want them to walk out the door five years from now. So I, I don't know if it's an easy answer.
Or one year from now.
I don't know if it's an easy answer, but I think it's something we're going to be examining over the next year to say, where do we need to be? What services can we provide alternatively? And, and then, you know, what, what do we need to do to keep our officers that we?
Yeah, I mean, I think a worst case scenario is that we're having folks that are one and two-year guys who may be making, you know, $36,000 a year. They come in, they get, we train them, we put them through the program and one or two years from now, they leave to go make 42 or 43 somewhere else. I mean, that, we cannot be in that position going forward. We don't have pensions anymore to, to, you know, to get folks to hold on. I mean, it's a, you know, this is a, to me, we let this go for too long and I suspect, I could see that becoming a pretty significant issue where we're really not staffed like we need to be and it's too late or, you know, where it's going to be even more difficult. So I know, I hope you guys will try to work on that.
Well, we will take a look at, you know, some of the reasons why employers will leave and we'll look at our turnover rate. Now, Chief Dern, I've, I've already had several conversations about this, so I'll pull together some information and come back to you.
And I've got some ideas on the revenue side to cover it too, so we'll talk about that later, but.
Mr. Washington.
Yeah, Rob, now, correct me if I'm wrong. The former chief, Chrisman, and, and some of us were very close together. He gave us some data about turnover and, and ratio of minorities to the citizens and the makeup of our demographics of the city and everything seemed to be pretty close to in line. We also worked with Coach Stockstill out of MTSU because, and, and because all those kids not going to, well, none of them going to NFFL and not staying for long, that's what NFFL stands for, not for long. But that was a good resource, so a lot, a lot of, some of the police, you have, that's where they came from, was from MTSU, the football team. So there's always been ongoing recruitment efforts and partnerships trying to fulfill some of those positions because, like I said, po' now, everybody don't want to be a police officer and everybody don't want to be a firefighter, everybody don't want to be a lineman. Been there. I went and do what they do, supervised them for what, 13 years and as long as I worked with electric utility company, that's, and teachers, those are specialized people that really want to do that kind of job. And I've learned that and it's difficult, but there have been ongoings, Mr. Lyons, efforts to, to address everything you just got through saying. And the turnover ratio, yes, you're going to have some, but it's not that many. Great place to work here. I'm just going from experience.
I think, I think it's a, you know, when we look at the firefighters, the numbers they just had, where, you know, they had 15 openings or something and had 300 and something candidates. I mean, that is, that is a, you know, we're, we're a significant, you know, we have vacancies literally in the police department that we can't fill. So whether it's turnover or whatever the reason is, it's different. And, and like I said, I'm not just about throwing money at it, but look, at the end of the day, this is a job, it has to be a career and there has to be a premium for taking the risk that they take. I mean, or else, I mean, look, here's the deal. To me, the nationwide market for being a police officer is changing. I mean, we, we all probably up here understand that it's different as far as the, the, the public perception and the things that are going on. And in any kind of business, you better be willing to change with the market. And to me, the market for police officers is changing and we need to deal with that and it's probably not going to be by paying them less. It's probably going to be by paying them more or, you know, offering other things and doing all the things that you guys are doing. But I'm guessing that paying them more probably has to be factored in there somewhere or another. So, you know, I guess what I'm saying is I'm willing to look into that and if other folks are, you know, I think we just need to be aware of it and identify the problem and if we can start fixing it now, we probably should.
Take a look.
Just to follow up on what Rick's saying, I had lunch with a couple of police officers yesterday, yesterday. And I, I said 10 years from now, I'm not sure how we'll hire a teacher or a police officer because we have a problem with respect in our country. And I don't know, it's not a local problem. It's not a problem that Murfreesboro has. It's, we're not unique. But, but we do have to, as Rick just said, adjust as the market and demand changes. And, and I think that there's only one incentive that I know of that's going to get our police officers, once we get them properly trained and equipped, to stay. And, and, you know, the spending the money's the easy part. I mean, as Rob says, the raising the revenues is the tough side. And, and I get exactly what he's saying and I think six new officers added to the force will have to help. I mean, there, there's no question. But, but there is a, a question of retention and the numbers that I keep getting thrown at me as far as our retention and our turnover, they, they just don't sound good. And we, certainly anything we can do as far as a council, and I'm certain, I think I'm speaking for Rick and myself at least, that we can do to aid the situation and make sure that we get better retention, we're, we're willing to step up and do it on our side. So don't, don't, don't hold back. Tell us what you need.
And like I said, I'm, I'm speaking to every employee within the organization for 15 minutes and I'm asking them three questions. What do you like about the police department? What opportunities, if, would you like to change about it? And if you're the chief of police, what one thing would you change? So I'm, I'm, I'm three quarters of the way through the agency and I'm going to sit down and, and look through everything and find those opportunities for retention. You know, what, what are those major issues that the, the employees are telling me? And so right now I don't, I, I can't answer that question, but it's something in two or three months, I could be any answer. I know we are two or three weeks out in our budget, but, you know, we're, we're, we will work on it. We will look to retain them. I mean, it was a good, you're speaking to an officer that wanted to leave several weeks ago and talking to that officer and having other people talk to him, that officer's going to leave and go to another agency locally, but then that officer decided to stay. So again, sitting down, talking to people and talking through the issues and showing the future of Murfreesboro too, because we love, have a lot to offer. So we're, we're doing everything we can to, to keep the officers we have and how do we bring good officers in too, so.
Chief Dern said he was meeting with everyone, but he failed to mention to you was oftentimes that's kept him here till past midnight after he's worked a full day. So I'd really give him a lot of credit for wanting to get some face time with all of our officers, even after a full day to stay till midnight and do it again the next night and do it again the next night, so that he can get that kind of direct feedback. Does help us get a better idea about what's going on and help us figure out where we need to be.
And I know the police department is our largest department, but what I'm hearing and some of the police officers talking to me and what I'm reading, the turnover ratio is extremely high in the police department. I know it's the largest department and, you know, their percentages will be higher, but, and not directed to you because you just got here. You're, you're the new kid on the block. But I guess to Rob and Jim, the percentage must be tremendously high for all this conversation we're having in the police department and it would be good to know, I would be interested in knowing, I know people move and whatever jobs, spouses' jobs, you know, different situation while they move. I would be interested in knowing how many of our police officers have left the force and gone to other police departments. It sounds like a, it is a financial thing. It sounds like a, it is a financial thing because I've talked to some of them. They said, you know, we get trained and if somebody's going to offer me ten thousand more dollars, I'm going to go down the street or wherever. And piggybacking on what the two of you are talking about, it'd be interesting in knowing, and we have to keep this retention down, you know.
We'll be glad to show that. And part of the turnover, you know, there's, and HR tracks it to some detail, you know, part of the turnover we have is, is turnover that happens because of retirements. It's the biggest department. That means, you know, sergeant retires, police officer gets promoted, then there's a vacancy there. So, some of the positions that we needed to be filled have been the result of employees leaving because they finished their career with the city. The ones who leave because they're going somewhere else, we try to get an idea about why is it that they left. There's an exit interview. So, we'll have some data that we can come back to and give you actually what the numbers are. The numbers are what the numbers are, and, you know, thank you for bringing and surfacing the issue. That'll help us paint a picture combined with Chief Durs' one-on-one interviews. We'll be able to see where we need to be.
Yeah, I think it's a bigger-picture issue. I mean, I think it's nationwide. I don't think it's specific to Murfreesboro. I mean, we got a lot of good things to offer, but it's, I mean, you know, look, it's just like Ron said, would he want to be a firefighter or police? Heck, no. I mean, you know, I think about it every time I hear the siren go off when it's Christmas Day or Easter or whatever. I mean, I'm like, man, you know, but, you know, if we, I'm, the people rolling off in retirement, obviously, but what I'm talking about is the number of applicants that we get, the number of those that are qualified and can pass a background check and then start the trainee program and then end up staying with us for five years or longer. I suspect that number's not great if you look at the last two years. I'm not saying it's terrible, but I bet it's not great. And so, if that needs some room for improvement, we need to know about it. It's budget time. Next budget time's a year from now, which puts those new trainees two or two and a half years out. So, we're getting, we're, well, I think I'm trying to help.
I know, and I hear. So, some perspective coming from where the last agency, we were operating, we were over fourteen percent down. So, like you, like everybody expressed here, it's a national problem. So, I can't say that we're outside the bubble on that in extreme. But, I'm hearing the conscious voice of the employees and for me to give you a substantive saying, this is definitely A, B, and C that we need to do to retain our employees. In three weeks, I can't do that, but I think in a couple of months, in building up for the next fiscal year and coming forward with a good action plan, I think is, is something. Bringing in six officers right now is a good step to show the officers, hey, we're listening. We're going to order, we got more cars in this budget. And I know that is one of the things that the officers do talk about a lot because that is their office, going from call to call to call. They're in there for eight or ten hours a day. So, that's, that's one of the largest discussion items I've heard too, is cars. So, but we're working on, on moving forward with that.
Chief, because of the equipment that many of the officers have, and you just mentioned cars, are we looking primarily now at SUVs? Are we still looking at all-wheel-drive cars? Or what are we looking at as far as equipment costs? I mean, it seems like your luggage that you're carrying with you on each trip seems to increase with every trip. Is, is, are we making a transition more towards the SUV-type equipment, or are we going to continue down the road of vehicles that seem to be a little bit small for demand?
That's the same question that some of the officers asked me when I first got here, and we did a study out in my former agency on cars. We looked at the Chevys and everything, and we put them all together, and hands down, not only fuel, more fuel-efficient, the Ford SUV than the other, than others, but it was unanimously thumbs up from the officers. And the other thing that we found out from, and some, doing some studies with RISK, is officers getting, or injuries to our officers were some, for, excuse me, I'm stuttering, from their knees, getting in and out of the car, they were injuring their knees, and we reduced knee injuries. So, it actually had a different effect too. We do carry a lot of equipment. Field-trained officers have a secondary person in there with the computers that are in there. It gets very cramped, so these, some of the cars that are smaller are really not suitable for two people, vehicles. So, the SUV, I think, is the way to go. That's what we're moving towards with our next car purchase, and I think that's what we're going to move further to because when we get in accidents and things like that, it's nice to have the same fleet. I'm sure fleet appreciates having the same car to work on, cages and different things like that. If you have different models, then it becomes very costly because everything's custom-made. But, yes, sir, it's the SUVs that we want to move to. And with, I hear there's some flooding sometimes around here, so having the SUVs on a higher platform too would, would, could prove beneficial.
Chief, the only question I have, and this is more towards Mr. Lyons, you know, we had discussion about our red light traffic ticketing program and...
Yes. I thought about that the other day.
Yeah.
And I called the chief. What we want, we've actually, the chief brought to me yesterday, we made some revisions today to a offline red light camera budget. We'll email that to you. What we showed in the red light, you know, camera budget was about a million dollars in revenue and then a million dollars in expense, with much of it being, you know, some of the salaries that are dedicated toward this, but also education, billboards, speed trailers, warning drivers about how fast they were going, and then two motorcycles. The motorcycles focus primarily on traffic safety and traffic enforcement. That's all they do. So, the chief has put together a budget that does track the red light camera. Apologize for not having it here in front of you. The business of today, I didn't get it on your desk, but it is done.
It would be good, you know, in the next couple of months, let's allocate what we think it's going to cost, but really would want to see an overall aggressive driving campaign that would be from the city, that would hit social media, that would hit billboards, but where people actually, you know, driving down the road will see distracted driving, running red lights, you know, how big of an issue it is. And then, you know, I went and spoke at the DARE graduation on Friday, and we've got a great opportunity with a captive audience that, you know, we can start that training in, in elementary, or in the middle schools or elementary schools about distracted driving. And, you know, I'm, I find myself, kids are a product of what we teach them, and I find myself having to literally put the phone down when I'm in the car because the kids see me do that. So, it would be good to go ahead and, with that safety being the main focus, to show, look, this is what we're doing to do that, to start a program.
Yeah. I apologize for not having it in front of you, but chief has put together that budget.
Any questions for the chief?
Just one last comment.
Sure.
Chief Durs, I know this is the week in which we recognize our police officers, and we had a wonderful service, I understand, on the plaza this morning. But, I personally, and I will speak for the council on this one, we sincerely appreciate everything you and every one of your officers do for this city. It's a phenomenal job that you do. The service that you provide is excellent, and, you know, it sounds like we want it to be better, but, but the reality of it is, is you guys do a job that Ron Washington and myself would not like to have. And, and so, thank you, and please pass that along to your officers, how much the council does appreciate the service that they provide our city.
I will do that.
I agree. And we have Deputy Chief Bowen in the back and Assistant Chief Cook who are in the back also. I would like, if, I mean, if it's possible after the meeting, I'm perfectly fine being deputized if you want to, if you want to do that. I'm sure some of us others would like to do that as well. We can make citizens arrest.
Well, we are starting to talk, we're going to look at a chaplain's program too, incorporating that.
Awesome.
And I would like for us to have the opportunity, maybe to have a ride-around in the near future. I know we do it with some of our classes and stuff, but just to kind of get a feel for where we're at currently, I think it would be helpful for us to have an understanding some, if you could have some of that.
I did, I did a ride-around, see, Cook, he's over there, I did a ride-around with Cook over twenty years ago, and I've never been in the car again after that, so. I'm just kidding.
He's all changed, having some flashbacks when he's there.
All right, thanks, chief. We'll move into the drug fund. That's on page two thirty-five. You could pull it. Can't honeycut. Any questions?
It is what it is.
You have the drug fund in front of you. Any questions for chief? Thank you, chief.
I'll stay a little bit longer to make up for leaving last time.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was going to make you go last since you're the new guy, but I figured y'all had a long day, so we'll get back on track now, go to solid waste services and follow the agenda from here.
Well, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Solid waste industry is hopping. We've got a lot of changes coming up here in the next few years, and, you know, just talking about growth rates and stuff, just to give you a little bit of a highlight that we did last year, we delivered a little over eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight carts to new homes last year. So, I guess if you do what, what the average house per home comes in is, what, four, three-point-two or four? So, that's, gives you a little bit of idea of that. So, in next year, for our budget goals that we're looking at, is to try to change the perception that picking up garbage is a free because we have free disposal. So, we're going to be looking at, as Rob indicated earlier, about a five-dollar per home, per dump, per month fee, looking at putting it on either the structure of either the water bill or to the electric bill. And with the expected closure of the Middle Point landfill within five to eight years, we're going, we're actually in the process of setting up a time to interview our two finalists on our solid waste advisory, and that's, looks like projected right now on June the seventh and also on the seventeenth of June. We'll have two different groups coming in on those days that our solid waste committee's going to be interviewing to see who's going to be chosen for that. And then, we're also going to be looking at, that plan also is going to be included, looking at recycling and how we're going to dispose of our garbage. Other than that, if you got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
How many households are we picking up right now?
Right now, as far as carts out there, we've got a little over forty-seven thousand, I think, if I, or forty-six thousand carts. Now, when we say carts, that's, it's, when I look at it, because it takes the exact same amount, if it has one cart at one house or two, it's something like that. So, that's about how many carts, that's how many carts we have out at businesses and houses. And then, we also have those ones that are apartments and stuff that may be on College Street or something like that, may have two or three different people living in it, so they, you don't have but one mailbox, but you may have four different little units in there. So, sometimes it's a little bit difficult to tell you.
Mr. Smith, how's Hoggzilla doing?
Hoggzilla right now is doing fine as, as long as Jack can keep it up and running. But, we do have money in our CIP to be looking at replacing it because it will be surpassing its eleventh birthday here on August the fifth. And it's, we have, we actually broke a shaft in the pump that's been on there for ten years, and so, it takes a beating, but we, like I said, in last year, we did a little over forty-two thousand tons of yard waste through the facility. So, but we're looking at having to try to, let's say, not take it out to pasture because we will keep it as a backup, but it does definitely going to be looking at being replaced. And if we, and the reason why we want to replace it at this time is, if anybody's familiar with class seven or eight vehicles, everybody has the new DEF systems on it where they have to sit and do a passive regen. And if we get it in budget this year, we will be able to get one without being a Tier Four compliance, so we're not looking at trying to have to sit out there and regen the engine.
Joey, I'm no expert on solid waste, and I'm not implying that I am, but I'm getting a lot of comments from the community on the brush pickup right now.
Yes, sir.
And is there anything that we can do, or what would you, I mean, are we short of manpower? Are we short of equipment?
Well, it's not so much a short of equipment. What we have is, is that we have, we have routed the, the brush.
Right.
And it's just like a garbage route. The only difference is, is when we have a brush route and that person is out, we do not have somebody that backs up the brush route. It's, garbage is what we pick up. It goes out every day. We have, and we do, also, we do not, technically, we do not follow any of the ordinance, I mean, the ordinance as far as the amount of brush that we pick up, the size that we pick up. The only thing that we try to limit them is on the length. So, if I'm sitting there and where I have two carts or one cart, I know it's thirteen seconds, but if I sit there at eight hours at one house picking up, because a tree service came in and took out four or five big oak trees, and they've got it piled up from one end to the other, if you had gone down Oakland, well, Warrior Drive, where you have the, the house, the gentlemen call it the pond house with the palm trees. If you started at the fence there and went to the next gravel driveway, somebody was kind enough to put a brush pile that went from that gravel driveway all the way up to that fence. So, you're sitting out there on Warrior Drive trying to pick up a brush pile that takes them almost three and a half, four hours. So, it's not so much that, it's just, we do not limit the amount of brush that we pick up.
Is it safe to assume that they paid a private contractor to come in and take care of their brush problem? Is there anything that would protect us?
We do have an ordinance that says if they, in fact, we have put it over with codes and, and working with the, with different ones, because the codes, basically, the code says if a service, if you hire a service, whether it be clip your grass, cut your tree, or trim the brush, they are to haul it off. And they have right now free disposal at our facility. But, we normally, in fact, we've had, we actually had a, a, a previous employer who, who retired, who hired a tree service that said, well, they had a contact with me that we would pick it up for. We don't do that. And so, I sort of, I gave her a list of three that we actually do because they do know that, you know, they have, we have a, you know, AJ Tree Service and some of the, that do have the contract with Middle Tennessee, I mean, Middle Tennessee Electric and also Murfreesboro Electric. They cut and they bring it to us, or they shred it right there on site. So, it's not something that, you know...
You know, and, Mr., I think Mr. Smuthman is really sort of nailing in when we start looking at when you're taking, I mean, one of my biggest pet peeves is, and, is if you mow your grass and you don't put it in a bag and you just dump it out on the front of the street, because what ends up happening is it blocks the storm grate.
Right.
Then, all of that goes into the storm sewer. It goes to other people's driveways. And as a city official, I get frustrated because then a gentleman has to get out of the truck with a flat shovel and they're out there. So, it, it sounds like that we may need to find a way where we can be more efficient, but that, to say that, you know, like I had some trees cut down in my yard, and it was not even an option that the guy threw them out in the front. He loaded them in the back of his truck and he took them off. So, how can we improve on that where we're not, because what happens is maybe one or two households are taking advantage, and that's causing a whole subdivision to not get a, to get picked up.
The, if, if you run out to, as far as the grass is concerned, you know, we do, right now, we do require it, you can either put it out loose or in paper, the biodegradable paper bags. It's so much quicker to do it because if you notice, when our guys do the grass, they're raking. You know, they're trying to get it up just as clean, even if it's in the grass or in the street, doesn't matter, they do try to rake it up. When it's in the bag, you just come in, it's, in fact, I did a, in the Hamptons about two years ago, we did a demonstration thing where we actually picked up thirty bags of grass versus a pile of grass that was out there. It's about, about, almost about forty-five minutes by the time you do it because you're picking up. And the boom is not what you would call very efficient picking up grass because it comes out and squeezes out the side and falls down, so you actually created a mess. So, we're doing that. So, grass bags makes it a lot quicker, but we are trying to get the word out as far as just putting it on the, you know, the channel three. We've also talked with the codes department in trying to inform people. And if I catch them, what I do is I tag them, but that's about all I can do, is just say that we, we tag, say, a tree service must, you know...
What if we came up with a workable policy and we actually had that sent out through water and sewer, through Murfreesboro Electric, through Middle Tennessee Electric, and we just said, you know, we need to improve this policy, this is why we're improving it, and, I mean, I don't know what's a good, that's something that it seems like that we need... I mean, I don't know what's a good, that's something that it seems like that we need to, to work on.
Yeah, I'll be glad to work with Mr. Smith on them.
And I guess my question is, it's that time of year, and, and it's leaf time, and it's springtime, and we have the seasonal storms and stuff, and the wind blows, and the old debris falls off the trees. But we hear it every year, it's nothing new. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of with you where I am with the police chief. If there's something you need that we can improve the service, I'd rather you tell us
Right.
And, and say, look, it would help if I had two more people, and if you would tell me you need two more people, we'll do what we can to get you two more people.
Well, I've got three in the budget, and, you know, and you're asking, you know, and I've got, you know, it's, I've got three in the budget, just trying to hire. Because when you hire somebody, right now, it's like pulling hinge teeth, because I think our unemployment rate here is about 3.4% or even less. And as y'all stated, you don't want to be a fireman or a, or a policeman, there's a lot of people don't want to deal with garbage. They don't want to, you know, because, and I look at it this way, and I try to tell people when they come in, our vehicles, there's not too many people, I have not seen a new Bengotti Siron running around out through here that's about a million, 1.3. Our trucks are just as, you know, probably a little bit more expensive than a Bentley or a Rolls, but let's just say they're not sexy. And, and it's not, and, and, and to me, I love garbage.
Would they look bad if they were red?
I mean, I absolutely do. I live and breathe, I live and breathe garbage. And the problem is, it's not just a police thing, but if you go through and look at, if you look at every 18-wheeler that you're seeing down the, the road now, it's got a help wanted sign. If you go right out to Avery Express, there's two trucking companies there. There's not just a shortage of police officers and firemen, there's also being a shortage of technicians that work on the new vehicles, there's also a shortage of drivers. In fact, in the Waste News this morning, it says by 2022, that we're going to be 59,000 jobs left, excuse me, of drivers. And that's not just, that's not just, and that's in just in the garbage industry, that's not in the general transportation industry overall, that ships goods and services from the ports, deliver fuel to the fuel islands and stuff like that, but that's overall. And then also, it's going to be almost 79,000 in the technology part, because right now, the, the technology that they're putting on the engines, not just the equipment that we put in the trucks, but the technology in the engine has grown so much that they can't even hardly fill the position.
Mr. Smith, if the three new employees, that's, is that a?
He's got three vacancies. He's, there's no additions to headcount in solid waste, he's got three current vacancies.
Okay.
Okay, because you said you had three new employees, there's no increase at all in headcount?
Right, when I say three new, it's three vacancies that we, you come in, and we basically hire in from a non-CDL stack, because that's the best way that we have found to be able to train them up.
So, you know, I, I think back all the way to when I ran for council the first time in 2005, and we would get questions about a recycling program.
Yes, sir.
You know, and now, I think it's good that we're, we're actually talking about it, but how long would it take us to start a curbside, curbside recycling program?
A curbside recycling program, if you wanted to, one, which, the first thing I would ask you is, could I have crimson colored cans?
No.
Which I know would probably not be usable, but we wouldn't want to use, we couldn't use black, because that's what we'd use on, on that. We wouldn't want to use blue, and I wouldn't even want to use green, because those are some that's already out in the thing. So I knew that crimson wouldn't be in there, so I figured we'd go with a gold one. That way, as somebody suggested, if I put a black lid on it, then we could be Vanderbilt, that way we'd be user neutral, because it wouldn't be that too offensive to anybody. But just the carts alone.
You could steal them.
And I've already looked at starting to, starting to look at, if we were to do a pilot program, what areas or neighborhoods that I'd want to do, because one, it's going to be the educational part. Two, once we started looking at where we would take it, and right now, from a, from a standpoint of where I know that I could take it and deliver it every day and not be cut, shut down, it would probably be the Rivergate Recycling Facility that Waste Management runs. The difference is, doing that pilot program, it's going to cost me $4 a ton just to be able to have the privilege of dumping our recyclables there. And when we do that, there's a certain amount of recyclables that they want, which would be corrugated, sorted office paper, plastics 1 and 2s, they do not want any 3 through 7s or bags, and also, we would be taking no glass. So technically, that's what we would be picking up on a pilot program right now. For us to look at doing that, that's part of what our, our consultant's going to be looking at, because when we look at trying to do the global picture of waste, it's going to be more on to what we're picking up and what we do not want to have to transport 80 miles, 1,000 miles out, to see what we're going to actually be able to take out of that waste string, and how we're going to deal, because glass is going to be a big problem. Because glass is very heavy, but there's nobody in the recycling end that wants to actually be able to pick that up and use it. So we're going to have to figure out, think outside the box on what we're going to do. But on a pilot program right now, we could, we could get it started, but we're going to have to determine what color cans we want, and then what we're going to do, and then just have to be able to do it, and it's going to be a driver. And I would start it out right now, because the other part that we're going to have to really think about is the educational part, because there's so much disinformation out there about what is recyclable, and we want to be able to, because when we do it, we want to do it right the first time, because I don't want to start something and say, all of a sudden, we're going to take something back because we can't use it.
Right.
So we'll start with just.
Well, the reason, the reason I ask that, you know, the solid waste fee, it, it's not a matter of when or if.
No, sir.
It, it's, it's coming.
It's coming.
And we can't, you know, we're, we're, $9.85 a month is what we're charging right now. If you just said what it would cost to get your trash picked up, you're paying $10 a month, per household, is what you're, you're paying. And so, I, I mean, I'm, I understand a solid waste fee, but I also think that it's good that when, if you roll out a solid waste fee, that people are getting something that's different than what they're getting, and I think that a recycle program's going to be huge. I mean, I pay $12 a month for my recycling right now. So, you know, you're $144 a year, and if you're telling me that I can pay $5 for my solid waste, and that includes recycling, that's a $7 deduction, so, you know, $84 a year for a lot of people.
Well, the, the $5 also includes, if you look at our total solid waste, it includes running our convenience center down at 648 West Main Street. It's also Hogzilla, grinding and mulching that 42,000 tons of yard waste that we did last year.
The reason I say that, I had, I was meeting with someone today, and I told them, I think what you're going to see in the future is that electricity, Water and Sewer, and solid waste and garbage pickup are utilities, they're going to be considered utilities, and that's really where it's.
Well, and, and I also look at it, and this is part of what some of the envision that we have, is going to be that, like a utility, if you have two cans out there, it's going to be a different price. If you have a small can, almost what they call a paysay truck. And that's going to be a total culture shock for some folks that think that, you know, that for years, we sit out there and you can go by and look at it, and they've got piled up out there, or when you have somebody that comes out, and, we do, and this is also like, because right now, this is the, our crazy time of year, because the college kids are starting to leave, and I'll have, next August, I'll have a whole bunch more to re-educate about where to put their garbage can, just how to park, how to put it out. But when they sort of seem to leave, they leave a lot of stuff behind. And so it's almost like we're picking up a whole house at some of the rented properties that we have, and they just sort of chunk it out on the street. So when we're looking at our total solid waste, it's not just what, in fact, one of the things that we're going to be doing when we're interviewing the people and consultants, most people assume it's just what you see at the end of the street, it's what's in the cart. I'm looking at it from a total global standpoint of what we're going to be doing with mattresses, TVs, furniture items, and stuff like that, because when we start looking at whether we do whatever system that we use, bulk items or bulky waste is a very big problem, and so we're going to have to be looking at that. So there's going to be a charge even for us to go out and pick up, if somebody's got a household of garbage that's sitting out there that's not technically something that you normally put in your garbage can. There's, there's a whole, when we do this system, we're not just looking at just changing $5, $10 for recycling, we're also going to be looking at changing the way that we do our business plan, and also the way we do ordinances, because the ordinances and everything else will be, have to be changed just to stimulate some of the, I guess, some of the, the carrot and stick approach, I guess, would be the best way to say it.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith? All right.
Ms. Harris, my guys are glad to see you, because I'm sure I'll get the comment in the morning, because they've already, they have been asking you every time, so, Bucky and Ralph King and them are proud to see you back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to community development.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. First of all, I want to thank you for approving our second-year action plan on May 5th. The document has been submitted to HUD for review, and we've been given no reason to expect that it will not be approved. The budget that you have in front of you is what we will use to implement that plan. Our community development block grant for the 2016-17 program year is $719,401. That's a decrease of 3.1% over the last, over the current year, and a total drop of over $50,000 since our peak of $772,000 in 2013. The budget before you is based on the 2016-17 allocation, plus $255,000 of current CDBG funds that would be carried forward, and $20,000 in projected program income. We will, as we always do, come back to you in the fall with a revised budget based on the actual carry forward. Second-year action plan, and this budget's built around our core programs, housing rehabilitation, assistance to first home, first-time home buyers, acquisition of property that includes a building lot for Habitat for Humanity, and I'm pleased that I've been invited to represent the city next week for the ribbon cutting for the house that is being, that has been built on the lot that we gave them this year. Plus, we're going to be assisting two nonprofits in the purchase of housing units that they will use then as affordable rental property for a minimum of 10 years. Plus, in the action plan, you approved public service grants to 13 agencies that will provide direct services, somewhere close to 3,000 of our moderate and low-income residents. We also expect to receive an emergency solutions grant of $159,366 from the Tennessee Housing Development Agency. We have been told by THDA this, this will be the last year that it sets aside funding for the CDBG entitlement cities that don't receive a direct ESG allocation from HUD. We're working with the Homeless Alliance of Rutherford County, and if you, if that doesn't ring a bell, that's the, the new name for the old mayor's homeless task force. We're working with the Homeless Alliance to have a plan in place to offset the funding reduction next year.
Any questions for Mr. Calla? Thank you, Mr. Calla.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and Council.
Mayor, as you'll recall, last year, we split off tax, the city manager's office, and the city council into separate budgets. Your budget is actually very straightforward, the one item I call your attention is a miscellaneous expense. Those are the Christmas gift certificates that are provided to city employees. Be happy to answer any questions you might have. Okay, the manager's office budget, we've got a year really focused on some studies. We'll be overseeing the completion of the comprehensive plan, the Highlands and Bottoms studies, tax increment financing, but also with the soon-to-be relocated police department. We've got a expenditure with Ken and Calhoun that we'd like them to do a space needs study for all of the city departments. We continue to grow our staff, we're running out of space to put them, but we'll have some 32,000 square feet opened up when the police department moves out, so we want to step back and look at how we might need to better organize and optimize your staffing, and also work with our leadership team and our employees on some change management. There has been many, many changes. Staff's a little bit change weary, but they've certainly been troopers about it, but we want to make sure that as we continue to evolve and change, that we can do a better job at that as well. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Finance and Tax Department.
I think the items I'd like to highlight most have already been mentioned tonight, and that is our new software program. With staff's assistance, primarily with Erin Tucker and Honest Dovall, we were able to implement the financial piece. Erin has been a tremendous assistance to, not only that, but she's assisting with the HR piece, the payroll piece. She has already started working with our teams on the fixed asset piece, the city court piece, and she has taken on the role of assisting with purchasing, director role for approving POs while we're in the middle of that search. So we, we have a wonderful staff, and I'd like to highlight the goals that, and accomplishments that we've already met, most of which is with the technology. As far as the budget's concerned, as, as the city manager mentioned, this is our first year to be separated, last year, we were part of his budget. The biggest change in our budget from this year to next year is, we are removing the software maintenance out of our budget and putting it in IT's budget. That was at the request of the IT director, he would like to have all of the maintenance agreements put in his budget, so he can keep a close watch on those and make sure that we are renewing those that we should, and that someone that is knowledgeable is making sure that the dollar amounts we're paying for those agreements is in line with what the current market would be. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll move to general government buildings, page 71.
Jump on that one. We have centralized the maintenance of our city buildings, we see this again as another cost-effective measure for us to do a better job maintaining our buildings. I know we've had fun with names like Hogzilla, we've got one now in our general government buildings, we're going to get a software called Facilities Dude. What this is, is an online maintenance request system, where if there's a problem in a building, it can get logged into Facility Dude, work get assigned, we can track expenditures, turnaround time. We think that will give us some good information that is needed, and continue to inventory the city buildings and facilities. Really like to credit Mr. Ron Dennis, the departments have regularly come up to me and told me how much easier it is and how much better the job's getting done, so this has been a good step for us.
Page 82, communications.
Evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Some of the accomplishments and projects for the Communications Department currently are, we've got contracts and purchase orders authorized to upgrade, to start beginning the upgrading of the city TV facilities to high definition, also renovating the Communications Department and the Council Chamber. definition, also renovating the communications department and the council chambers. The funding for the renovations is coming from the capital improvement projects, and the funding for the upgrade of City TV is coming from a Comcast grant. We're also wrapping up a Comcast franchise fee audit. We should be bringing something to you on a settlement agreement in the next month or so. We achieved over 60,000 views of our archived online videos, web streaming, and our live video web streaming. We've got over 4,200 followers on the city's main Facebook page, over 3,200 followers on the city's Twitter feed, over 300 subscribers to the city's YouTube channel. Some of the department's goals for this coming budget year are to complete the upgrade of City TV, and also the renovations to the communications department and the council chambers. We'll be adding City TV to Roku. We'll also be adding real-time closed captioning of city council meetings, and over time, we hope to expand those to other boards and commissions as well. We'll be replacing some outdated wireless assisted listening devices here in the council chambers, and also hiring an outside legal attorney consultant to assist us in renewing the Comcast franchise fee agreement that expires in 2018. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
You say the contract that we're currently entering goes through 2018. I know that the city's wanting to talk about and consider the potential of maybe becoming a Google fiber city at some point. Is this contract renewal going to adversely affect our ability to pursue potentially getting into the fiber business, or are we...
I think, Mr. Smith, we met on that earlier this week. We've got some ideas on that. So, I don't believe it necessarily precludes it. I think if we were going to do some analysis about fiber, you know, we can tackle that ourselves and see where the cable franchise would go for television services. So, not mutually exclusive, but we did meet this week about the fiber.
Right. Franchise agreement with Comcast is a non-exclusive franchise, so anybody can come in and request a franchise agreement. I believe in Nashville, when Google went into Nashville, they actually obtained a state franchise. I don't think they got one at the local level. They have the option of either going local or state, and I think Google decided to go with the state franchise to bring Google in there.
High-speed internet and fiber in our community, we're actively tracking that right now. Chris Lilly's spoken with the Google Fiber person in Nashville several times. I think he's learned quite a bit. But we are taking a look to see how would we need to proceed, whether it was Google Fiber or whether we delivered an alternative method. We're still looking at all of our options.
All right, thank you. Legal department.
Legal department. This is, is first year of my budget, and you'll notice that there's not a big change from previous years. One of the things that probably the most significant increase is for an amount for assisting in implementing the code online. We think that's a great resource, or is a resource that's really necessary for a community internally and for those who do business in the city. So, there is an amount in there that will assist us to get that prepared online. Along those lines, you'll see shortly coming before you some cleanup ordinances to take out archaic provisions of the code so that we're not putting online things that were really not viable at this point in time. The legal department wants to remain a strong resource for economic development as the city continues to grow, so we're going to put a lot of emphasis on that. We also are, or one of the things that I noted when I came on, was that the department was taking a lead role in developing employee handbooks. And we do have, you know, an excellent, very professional human resources department, and the employee relations is much more than just legal, although there's a lot of legal aspects to it, and we will remain available to assist with that. But transitioning that to the human resources department is one of our goals this year. I've talked with Glenn about that, so this isn't blindsiding him with that one. The purchasing department, as it develops, we want to put a lot of emphasis into continuing to assist in purchasing ordinances and policies and procedures going in place, particularly with respect to construction. We do a lot of different types of construction projects in the city, and creating some consistency in updating those agreements is something that has a great benefit, I believe, and so we're going to put some emphasis on that. And we'll stay engaged in 2035 plan, particularly with respect to planning and zoning and annexation and the economic development aspects for that plan. So, with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, we'll move to risk management.
Risk management. One of our goals in risk management is to take a good, hard look at, because we are self-funded, the aspects of managing that in the most efficient way possible, both from an underwriting standpoint and from a funding standpoint. So, we'll take next year to put a lot of emphasis in that and see what would most benefit the city, either continuing along those lines or looking at some outside coverages that would make some financial sense. And we may actually be looking at, and coming back to council, with some consulting along those lines for the self-insurance fund. We, you know, along those lines also is insurance on our various construction activities and having a comprehensive program which may be able to save us money instead of incrementally implementing insurance coverages on each construction activity. So, we're taking a look at that. The moveover campaign, which is important to our public safety, Ms. Stace wants to continue to emphasize that program, and we feel like that's a very good idea. So, we'll put effort in there. And the NIMS training, our public safety is very aware of those. It's the National Incident Management Service, I think is service or system. I can't remember what the S stands for. I've done that. I've done certifications in that. It's, I think it's very valuable in the, from the standpoint of responding to disasters and crises. And so, while I'm not a fan of any type of training, because of my attention span mostly, and certainly not federal training, it is very good. And so, that's one thing that our safety director really felt was something we could emphasize next year.
What's the, Mr. Wright, what's the balance sheet? How much do we have in our risk fund right now, risk management fund?
While Ms. Wright's looking at that, does anyone have any more questions?
It turns out to be on the page you got the post-it note. That's pretty impressive.
This is not even my book. At June 30, the fixed asset, I mean, I'm sorry, the risk management fund balance was 9.2 million, and we're going to go into fund balance a little bit this year. I think right now it's projected at about a half a million. So, if that helps a little bit.
All right, we'll move to the judicial department.
Oh, that's true. It's usually less than that, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, members. The judicial department budget is on page 99. No major changes or additions this year. The challenges for the judicial department will be software-related with regard to implementing a real-time download of parking ticket being issued around the square, and implementing the new court management software. Try to take the judicial department to paperless. We're glad to answer any questions, your man.
Any questions for the judge? Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to human resources.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of Murfreesboro City Council, especially welcome back to Ms. Harris. It's always good to see you.
Thank you.
I'm pleased this evening to report to you our budget, which I believe is found on page 93. I will be reporting on the human resources overview, and Ms. Russell will follow up my remarks with a presentation on benefits and insurance. And Mr. Jake Davis, who is with Cowan Benefits, is here to assist also. Looking back on FY '16 accomplishments, I'm especially proud of two of those, one I'll mention first, and that is the ability for us to talk about the successful implementation of a Munis payroll module, as well as a Kronos time and attendance system for over 1,400 city employees. This was a team effort, multiple departments, finance, human resources, IT. I'm especially proud of Ms. Russell and also payroll supervisor Cheryl Sharp, who dedicated themselves, long hours, to make sure that everything was correct and everybody would be paid properly and on time before implementation. I'm also proud of the fact that we recruited and now have, of course, assimilated five key leaders in city management and administration, a couple of whom are sitting here with us tonight. I want to congratulate city council on your efforts to also participate in that partnership, as well as city administration. FY '17, I wanted to categorize on page 98 in three areas, and that would be people, data, and assets. People, of course, is the largest percentage change in our budget, which is 1.134 million dollars this year. There's roughly a 4.8% increase in our budget, the majority of which is under salaries for the full-time training and development manager, which is proposed as a full-time hire for us this year. I also wanted to thank council on your previous decision to support a part-time payroll assistant, which we are currently recruiting. As far as FY '17 goals, we would continue with the implementation and using the leverage of the Munis software to further deploy things that matter to people and city employees. For example, being able to at home look up the value of their employee benefits and paychecks, make W-4 election changes in the convenience of their own home, things that have been a lot of times what I would call transactional human resources things. One of our vision areas is to move into a strategic partner with city departments. So, some of those things that you'll see in FY '17 help to accomplish that. I did mention bringing on a training and development manager, which we hope will be able to leverage some of the key challenges that face the city with respect to compliance training. We also look to engage that individual with leadership and development training, and perhaps a city management leadership academy. This time, I'll ask Ms. Russell to present the benefits portion of our portion tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. You'll find an insurance tab in the supplemental binder. Those will be the areas that I'll touch on this evening. The city is recommending a 4% medical premium increase for calendar year 2017. We plan no major changes on overall coverage. However, some changes will be necessary. Sure, dental, for example, will no longer be offering HMO coverage for 2017. Since we only have about 2% of our employees in that program, they will be able to select Delta Dental Insurance, which offers competitive pricing and lots of provider options. The city's agreement with VSP Vision Insurance will be up for renewal in January 2017. We anticipate about a 5% increase in premium. Stop-loss insurance is bid out annually, and it'll be up for renewal later this year. Swiss Blue Re is our current stop-loss provider. Cowan Benefit Services has been our benefit consultant since January 2014, and their agreement is set to expire December 31, 2016. So, later this year, staff will be submitting a proposal for a recommendation for council to consider for approval. Our biggest push for 2017 will be wellness. Next month, a proposal will go out for a wellness vendor effective January 2017. With the new vendor in place, staff would like to offer a three-pronged approach to wellness, that is awareness, engagement, and accountability. We'll continue to offer the biometric screenings and a premium reduction for incentives up to $500 based on results. We plan to have a more robust wellness committee and hopefully incorporate some of the better borough project initiatives into our program. Our ultimate goal is changing behavior through lifestyles. Currently, city employees can sign up for Fit for Success memberships with parks and recreation facilities and pay only the taxes on the membership. In 2017, we're recommending including family members and apply the applicable fringe tax on that. The financial impact for health benefits for 2017 is expected to be approximately $16,769,000, which is about a 2.1% increase over last fiscal year. A 4% rate increase for the calendar year is being recommended for employees for pre-Medicare retiree PPO and HRA plans. You'll recall last year, we had a rate pass for employees. The post-Medicare retiree plan, PPO plan, will see no premium increase, and this will be the third year in a row that they've not had an increase. And the post-Medicare HRE plan will also remain unchanged. And Attachment A in the supplemental binder details all recommended premium changes. By approving the budget, council has approved the benefits, as I've stated them. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? Thank you. I believe that's everything on my list, unless I've missed. Is there any department that I've missed that's sitting out there?
No.
Okay. All right, any questions before our 7:00 meeting? All right, seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.